Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 Town and Land Act Planning Board meeting. The forum, I'm expecting others, but we have enough to begin the meeting, so we will start. The proposed agenda, we added to it, we inadvertently left on Stetsons Holdings that was intended to be on under Old Business, so we'll have the agenda modified to include them. However, the applicant was in touch with us today, and they have not received any final approvals from DOT, and they have asked for the application to be continued to the October 6th meeting. So when we get to the end, I'll officially bring that up under Old Business, and we'll take a vote at that time to continue, but that is the change in the agenda. Do you have your Jim's meeting notes, comments, questions? If there are none, man him a motion to accept the meeting notes. Second, second, although some favor.
Hi.
Proposed extension motion carries. You have a draft form of the August 18 minutes. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, man him a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed extension motion carries. Any correspondence or announcements? Alright, hearing none. We'll move into the new application portion of the meeting this evening. First up is Jennifer Joseph-Berg, 247 Cedar Heights Road, wetlands permit, deck and cabana. Good evening. I'm sorry. How are you? We're good, how are you? Step to the microphone and explain to us what you'd like to do.
Yeah, my name is JJ. I bought a house a few years ago, tore down the old pool, and, well, no, have put in the new pool, but are now, am now trying to put in a deck with a cabana. It is next to a wetland and approaching on the buffer zone, or in the buffer zone. So I have dealt with the D E C and given a permit by them, and I'm in the process of finishing up with the zoning board, so now I need a town, a brand back wetland permit. Please.
Okay. Do you want to explain all this, or do you want Jim to go through this?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so. Oh, God. Okay, right, so the previous pool, when I bought the house, was where the new pool is now. It's in front of the home, which was part of the zoning issue, but the D E C came and the surveyors came, sorry, it's been a long hit, last summer, and all agreed that there was nowhere else on the property, elevations, there's lots of forests, there's no one behind the house, the septic field, et cetera. So everyone agreed that where it is, is valid. Now, yeah, so, I'm sorry, I lost the thread. So yeah, basically, the plans have been done, everything's been ready to go for the deck and the cabana, but I was unaware that I needed a separate wetland permit, so here I am. I read through all the laws and stuff, the zoning thing, and I'm actually, despite the, you know, timing, whatever, glad, because this has made me change a few things that I didn't realize were necessary or helpful. So this is very good process, so a couple changes have been made to the plans and et cetera, which I laid out, and yeah, I'm just hoping that we'll all agree on not hurting any, you know, the wetlands.
Jim?
So, these are the, those, you know, probably the detailed plans. This is the pool here, the proposed deck, the ground, the cabana, we attach it to it in the front, and then these are the proposal stairs, coming down, the elevations and the cabana. So, you know, the reason we're here is that it does require a wetland permit for the planning board. We have applied to the D E C and then actually received approval from them already for the pool and the deck area as shown on the plans. So if you have approval from the D E C to do work, right up adjacent to the wetlands, that would obviously do with the 100-foot wetland buffer. So, really, I think it's a discussion by the planning board of, obviously, the wetland permit, and if you think that any changes might be necessary, but again, we do have approval from the D E C for the disturbance right up to the wetlands. You are looking for variance from the Z B A, so we'll have to wait on that, for the planning board to move forward. And the only other thought I have, you know, based on the site visit, you know, planning board members can take a look and see, you know, what it looks like when they go out. My only thought was that if you don't prevent vegetators, possibly some plantings in here would help slow any runoff from the, you know, the new deck and cabanas, as we've discussed previously, might be useful, but certainly take a look on the site visit to see if that C score, if there's already a bunch of, you know, existing plantings there, and maybe it's not necessary.
I've spoken with the partners, and we're already discussing the best, because I'm very happy to plant things there, and so yeah, that's already in motion.
And then...
Would you not, Jim, would you want that planting plan on the application?
Yeah, I think if you're going to do some plantings there, we want to know what they were, so some type of planting plan should be provided, whether it's on here or separate, I think except for the public, it'd be okay, just something to show what you're planning to do, that would be disturbance within the wetlands buffer, but I think that that's just something, you know, certainly that can be discussed in the field. And then, you know, it looked like the rendering that was provided, it looked like the rendering was showing, showing pedestrian elevation being shown here.
I had these renderings, I submitted new renderings that had a more realistic elevation, so it's, it's all flat. There's photos too.
Right, so the discussion was whether or not it would be more controlled or not, but again, I think the site visit will help determine if it looks out there and how this will turn out.
There won't be.
So I really don't have a whole lot of other comments. I'll just wait until you continue.
Questions or comments for any more members?
This is, this is built right up to the D E C wetland, yes? Because I didn't see the, so everything, the existing pool and all, all of this is within, is this the wetland here?
Yeah, the wetland is over on this side.
Correct. And is this a retaining wall?
There's a retaining wall on the left side, and then this is the delineation from the D E C.
So this, this is the wetland boundary here, so it's showing the silt fence.
I see.
So you're 100, this is a foot setback here, so you're 100-foot buffers, you know, something like that.
Yeah. Here's an existing pool on that same footprint?
This, this is the pool, and basically, the entire thing, if it is done as proposed, will be the exact same footprint as the previous pool and deck. Like, I'm not taking anything down, clearing any land, anything, everything's already just cleared from the old pool, and now I'm trying to replace it, basically, in the exacting spot.
Right now, there's no pool nearby?
There's a pool, but no deck or cabana.
Okay, but you're going to demolish the existing pool?
No, there was a pool as a deck, when I first bought the house. I know, it's ridiculous, back and forth. And then I demolished everything, and was able to put in a new pool, and then, when I went to put in the deck and cabana, you know, I now come up on some zoning and et cetera. So the pool is there, nothing else.
Okay, and this is going to be, the deck is going to be supported by those pilings that it shows in the drawing?
Piers, yeah. So it'll be literally, other than the hand digging, which we've already dug by hand a few, as like, just to see if it was whatever, it's literally going to be hand dug holes for piers, and that's it. No other disturbance other than piers to the actual ground.
And the cabana, can we see the cabana, Jim? It's open to the air.
Yeah, three, three sides will be open, with just the back wall.
And there is a bathroom, right?
That's, that's a future, I do not have high hopes on, on that working out, but in theory, based on future stuff, maybe that would be a powder room, but really just a changing room for now.
So there is a room that's enclosed in there someplace, that's a changing room?
Yeah, in this back corner, it's going to be just like, you know, a little, like a powder room, but without the powder, I'm not sure how that works.
And, and your, your hope, your goal would be for that potentially to be a bathroom, is that correct?
Yes, here.
But that's not your plan currently, or it's on the plan, right?
It's on the plan, because I was told to just put it all out there, because it doesn't actually have anything to do with, you know, the zoning and stuff that designs, but I'm working with an engineering firm and the D E C, and that's kind of like, who knows if that'll work out? So that's a, that'll be, you'll see me, you know, two years when I get close to that.
But we would be approving it with the, with that on the plan, so if it's shown on this plan, that's what you're asking us to approve now?
Yes, but it will have to be, they don't have to get further approval down the line for it to actually happen, but you would just be, from the D E C, from the, maybe the Florida Health, I, I mean, like...
It's important clarification that I'm trying to get here, and we're hopeless.
Yeah, so I believe what Ms. Joseph-Berg is saying is that she's hoping to perhaps one day have it, so she's included it on the site plan as potential future, so that she, there's like, you know, no segmentation, no coming back in the future. And I believe the other approvals that you were speaking of is probably D O H, you'd be, you know, would you be going into your existing septic, would you be putting in a new septic, do you have any ideas as to that?
It would be my existing septic and well, and I've just had an engineering firm come out and to even see if, if I opened a whole new cantor, but nothing to do with the pool, like, I have no idea how that's going to go, so that's just kind of, I'm going to have to get 90 other people to agree with me in the next, like, decade, so this is just kind of like, why don't we start here?
But there is water, right? I see an outdoor shower?
Yeah, there will be an outdoor shower, because it's a salt pool, but that has like a barrel, pan, I don't know what the term is.
Where does the water go from the outdoor shower?
Into a can, and then into a barrel to be used for irrigation, same as the gutters.
Is what it says, right?
Yeah, it's like purely forensic because of saltwater.
Do you drain the pool annually, or?
No.
And where's the changing room on this plan?
Right.
Oh. So if there ever is a bathroom there, it would be a changing room and a bathroom at the same time.
I mean, it'd be a bathroom.
I mean, on one hand, it is, it is helpful to know what the future design could be, and then the planning board can look at any potential issues that could raise from having that, with an outdoor shower or a bathroom, because, yeah, I mean, so that's, that one benefit is that it does allow you to consider possible concern, issues right now, before anything goes forward. And we, you would always put in the resolution when you're considering it, an explanation that this is what's proposed at some indefinite time in the future, so that we should go in for a building permit or see, oh, the building department's aware of it, and you can just explain, they're still looking, they still need D O H approvals, potential D E C that goes further, and, you know, and, you know, just kind of lay out the future that, if not, not happen, but if it does happen, it's been approved or approved with conditions.
But wouldn't we have to see the trenching plan then to the septic?
You already have electric to the site, and you have water as well, right, in the pool?
Yes, well, electric, yeah.
And, and water?
Well, it got filled with a tank, so we haven't connected to the water.
How, how's the shower made for?
To a hose, outside, I had an old one.
We did discuss trenching in the pre-con, and then there was a electric there, I thought we'd discussed it. So you're going to fill the pool with a hose, and then you would...
No, the pool's full from a tank, like a giant water tank, not from my hose.
Where does the water from, where does the water come from from the tank?
I think she's saying it's trucked in.
Yeah.
So you get a trucked periodically to refill it?
No, just, it's a brand-new pool, so I had it full filled with the water from...
Right, how's it refilled as a?
It's not, it's, I don't, I don't fill it, it stays full.
This is a bathroom, it's never a bathroom.
Oh, to top it off, like once a summer?
Yes.
A water tank, the same people.
So you'll have them come back to refill, top off the tank?
Yes.
Where does the water, where does the water supposed to come from for the shower?
A hose, from my lot.
And I'm still interested in whatever trenching would be required to the septic tank for a potential bathroom. I think that would have to be on the plan if we were to approve it.
Other planning board members? Please, um, what did I say? The, if the, if the health department, the D E C, whoever, has to go through their own approval process, they're going to have to approve trenching and everything else that would make sense, right?
Yes.
That has to be acceptable. I mean, to Kim's point...
The easiest thing to do, if it's not, if you don't want the bathroom now, take it off your plans, and then two years from now, come back with plans for that, because then you don't have to worry about trenching plans, outdoor, or anything else. Just take the toilet and stay that way.
I don't know, I kind of, I kind of think the opposite a little bit, and I think it's good for us to talk about, but I think we encourage people who want to know as much as possible upfront. It gives her the understanding, should she continue to walk this road in preparation for that, we have full disclosure, we have contingencies of what needs to happen before it's finally approved. I, I prefer this.
Yeah, and I agree with Delise, it's, you know, I appreciate your candor in telling us what your, what your goals are, and also, this is, it's a three-walled structure, it's never going to be used as a bathroom, or, I'm sorry, as a bedroom, so it's not added to the total bedroom count, and as far as the Department of Health is concerned, it's the number of bedrooms that determines the sizing and capacity of the septic system, not the number of toilets or showers and things like that. And I appreciate that you're, that you put the thought into capturing the shower water and not just dumping it into the wetland, because it's right there anyway, and, you know, likewise, the management of the pool, you're not draining it seasonally with fluorination and treated water into the, into the wetland, which is a bad thing to do. So, you know, I, I support your aims.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I mean, I'm not approving your plan, but I'm...
Hey, I'll take it.
I'm approving of your frankness.
So, just want to, again, we're looking at this from a wetlands disturbance perspective.
Yeah.
It isn't actually a precise plan, it's just for wetlands permit.
Thank you.
So, you know, one of the things to keep in mind is, if there is any trenching, we're already talking about this amount of disturbance here, it would be coming from the cabana, you know, up to wherever the, you know, the septic is. If this pool, just as referenced, was not in the wetland, you know, not in the wetland buffer, it's over here, we wouldn't even be reviewing the property that you were selling. So, you know, when we talked about this, it's not historic property, you know, any trenching that takes place, I think we'd understand there's going to be a trench or a pipe there somewhere. Certainly, it's the fourth priority as to how you want to, to handle that, and again, I think we want to see, you know, probably always ask everyone, think about what you're going to do now and in the future, and again, in there, it would be good to see where that trenching line would go, I don't know if it's absolutely vital, as long as you understand there will be some trenching that goes here, the building department would obviously have to review that, make sure it's, it's going in the right place, you're going to want to make sure you're not crossing any existing line, you're not going to dig up an existing line, any of that kind of stuff, which we typically would ask for, but, you know, I think that's obviously the fourth priority is to, to where you want to go. We are looking really primarily at disturbance within the wetland buffer, and whether or not we think this is acceptable, you know, for that disturbance.
Anyone else? Hope you have a draft procedural resolution?
Yes. So my other question was that, as I understand it, the next phase would be to do the, the newspaper and notices neighbors and everything, right? The fact that I literally last month did that for the zoning board, I was wondering if it was necessary to do it all over again?
So, different board, different process, requires...
Well, as far as, like, the people in my neighborhood, everyone, they know, I literally just told them all, so as far as that goes, nobody showed up to complain, so, but I, you know what I mean?
It's, it's a part of the legal process, even though, like, Jim said, it's a different approval, different thing, so unfortunately, we do have to cross that. Well, it's like, think about it, it's like a different meeting at a different office, right?
Right.
They know that your project's going on, but they don't know about this meeting, everything. They knew about a different meeting, so they have to be notified that this is where to show up, that this is, you know, because it's just a different office.
Okay.
John?
Gave procedure resolution for the board's consideration for the application of Jennifer Joseph-Berg for wetlands permit under Town Code Chapter 120, construction of the deck and cabana around a pool in the front yard at 247 Cedar Heights Road for the RC5 zoning district. Accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for further review. Classifying actions type 2 under SECA, for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. We'll schedule the public hearing for the application for October 6th, no earlier than 6:05 PM. We'll send it to C A B for review, actually, it does not need to go to Dutchess County, because this is just a wetland review, and we need two planning board members to do a site visit.
I'll go. Delise? Go up to right here.
I'll go.
Can I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
Sure.
A motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed extension motion carries. I'll be touching you to schedule a visit.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it. Take care.
So, Merle, just so, as you had mentioned, it is in front of the Z B A. Public hearing is continued. We had referred this to you a few months ago, and actually, there was Jim and the referral comments who mentioned the possibility of needing the wetlands, and the indoor site plan review, we have confirmed it's just wetlands. So my question, just as a summary, you know, so far, the Z B A has not raised any concerns, because the area variance is requested, they have, they take the projects fine, and, you know, they go comfortable with the D E C permits being issued already, we're waiting on the wetlands permit, obviously. With SECA being type 2, would you like the Z B A to continue the public hearing until you have a little more chance to review it? Do you have, or would you like to have the Z B A move forward with it, so that you can also continue your review? Whatever works, we can certainly keep you guys updated throughout the process, but I just want to know what wetlands have to do with it.
I think they should move forward.
Are you the additional board that's up in that seat?
Yeah, I think that issue with them is the fact that it's a development in front of the residents.
Yeah.
But it's taking the place of something that is, it's not like it's new development that is there, you know, granted, we probably should have seen this before the pool itself was replaced, but I think they should continue their review.
Okay, I will pass that along, and I'll put in the resolution, the necessity for the wetlands permit, and, you know, provide that in the procedural history, so that it's made aware for the record.
Thank you, Kim. The next new application proceeding is out of Jennifer Metcalf, 68229, site plan review for change of use. Good evening.
Hi, I have an objection.
Here's a pointer.
How are you? I'm Lisa Metcalf, I have also an application.
I'm Carl Hansen with The Art Building, representing the owner of the building.
So, our request is just for a change of use. We are looking to have a retail store, and, that's it. Do you have any questions?
I, I'm under the impression that there was a building inspector was there to do that?
Yeah, so, as part of the change of use, our previous use did not require an accessible ramp at the entry. For the new use, it does, and this is our fault, we just, in the shuffle of things, forgot to apply for that, so we started to construct it, but we've stopped today, and we could, it is removable, we could pull it off, it's on the existing stair grates, and we meant to bring that up and obviously go through the normal proceedings, that was just a...
Yeah, it's my understanding that the inspectors stopped the work, and that there's an expectation there will be a notice of violation issue?
Okay, we weren't informed of that in particular, but we have stopped.
I don't have that as, I have, as I said, an expectation, so we did look back at the application, which, and the precons, where we talked about non-exterior changes. So the application that was submitted, as it was submitted, indicated no exterior changes, so this isn't changing the application, right?
Yes, we had addressed this previously in a, in one of our responses to the initial comments from the planning board, that it looked like a ramp was required, the question was asked of us from the planning board.
Jennifer, please.
Yeah, and, and we did acknowledge that one was needed, but we didn't include in the application, because we don't have work in progress, so...
Jim, do you remember when that, there was an application, according to these stairs there, and I think during that application, there was a proposal of a removable ramp as part of that, does anyone else remember that? I recall that.
No? We have discussed the need, I think, as mentioned, it wasn't necessary for the previous use, I don't remember discussion of a removable, I mean, something, you know, something temporary, like those little metal ones, maybe, but no.
I think that was like the reason for, like, the stair height being reduced.
I have a...
I have a little time, but, just bringing up, because I know, I know there's original, there was, there's a conversation about, and it doesn't even vote on it, except, it's not...
There it is.
Well, it is a bit of a dilemma.
What's the issue? What are we, what are we trying to accomplish, like, what is the...
Well, in some, in some situations, there, there has not been a formal notice of violation issue. I've been led to believe that there might be one coming. Normally, we do not continue to review applications, this one, the application before us, does not include the ramp, and we normally would not continue necessarily to review an application that has a stuff recording notice of violation. Because of the timing, the way it happened today, the building inspector happened to be gone by and saw construction, and knew there hadn't been a building permit issue, and dropped in to say hi, and discovered the situation. By that time, Brian had left for the day, so there was no ability to communicate between zoning administrator and building inspector, so we're trying to walk through this in terms of what, what is feasible tonight.
So if I may make a recommendation, I haven't looked at this provision today, but from my recollection, the way the notice violation and that an application is not supposed to be submitted by a board if there's an outstanding notice violation, requirement in the zoning law is very specific, that it has to be a written notification that has been sent to the applicant.
And then they have 30 days, 30 days to rectify?
Uh, I don't know the timeframe of that, but...
I think it's 30 days.
But, but in terms of tonight, I think because we don't have a written notification, the best course of action for the planning board is to continue with it, with the information that they have in front of tonight, which is that there's no written notice of violation, and perhaps with no violation, if that is written, the applicant will be able to move forward, once they've rectified that by either putting the revised application, or the removal of the ramp. Or the removal.
How far along is the procedure?
We only started today, it could be reviewed tomorrow, if we believe to.
That seems to be the cleanest way to resolve that.
And then, and then once obviously it's through, if we come back, it's a bill thing, we could remove it.
Well, you have time, if you, if you renew it tomorrow, you have time between our acceptance of the application this evening to amend your application to include that, which would then bring it into completion, let's say, reporting completion, and then when we take it up in a month, you'll have a revised application probably showing your proposal. Does that make sense?
Do you meet every two weeks, or?
We're, the, the application, new application... We're, the application through application is every month.
Okay, there'd be no way to just get this in the next two weeks, but...
We need to advertise at the point of hearing, because we have a three-day notice.
A change of use requires a public hearing, is that correct?
This is a cycle I am, aside from the planning board, so yeah, we've got the same processes, we're the same.
And, I'm sorry, is this ramp material pretty much the same as those, like that open mesh?
No, it's like a pressure-treated deck, it's just a framing on top of that, secure to...
So when you advise and point out how it looks, what the ramp looks like?
Yeah.
Specific details.
I recall from the earlier filing about putting in the steps, that it was going to be like an open mesh, it's stronger than it's often, that's what I think.
This is from the original application a couple of years ago, that's where the steps are, and then I just can rely on the ramp, which is great for that.
And these are really open, it's not the diamond...
Yeah. It's a more creative expansion.
I can't break what they have about, if there are dogs involved at all, because that could be bad for dogs.
Thank you.
Not relevant.
All right, so then let's, so now we'll open it up. Jim, you want to offer your comments on what was supplied to us as the application?
Yes, so, you know, related to this discussion, we just need clarification, you know, with the ramp that you put in next, because we had noted, we had a lot of from Willingham Town Engineering, that the site plan that they provided would be adequate for reuse in this application, which is fine, but they had noted that they can be reused because there's no modifications to the grounds or outside the structure, which obviously is not the case now, so that just has to be rectified. And then, just two other notes for the planning board, a few other notes, you agreed to remove the storage container on the property prior to occupancy?
That's already been removed.
Okay. DEC Health has approved use of the structure because the total usage for water and sewer will be less with this use than it was the previous one, and Department of Transportation has also responded stating that the existing entrance is adequate for proposed use, so we have the outside of the premises.
Planning board members, questions?
Is there, are you going to have to make any changes to the doorway in order to get access with the wheelchair to the platform?
No, no, the existing doorway means they may get requirements for that.
What is the regional store going to be?
I have a current business that's a pop-up business for resale of women's events clothing and footwear, and I would like to have permits, Jason.
How do you judge the parking that would be required for this?
Parking standards in the code are guidelines. I think given the proposed use and size of the structure, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11 or 12 spaces, and 2K gap, I think that's more than enough parking for what we're looking at, other than, you know, if there's a big sale and everyone shows up at the same time. But we don't typically want to...
That would be my dream.
We don't typically want to put up for parking what we expect to be the maximum shop, like if you have a Christmas shop, and you don't build for that per se, because it's not used, you know, during the season, four days a year, so I think it's adequate as proposed, as anyone else has it this way.
Yeah, I would note too, that the zoning code for retail use intensively is less than the business use that we already have.
How many employees were on that space until you moved?
Six.
On a database?
Yeah.
I'm assuming I have six employees. Lone employee at the moment. Anyone else have questions, comments? Jim, I believe you can draft and receive your resolution.
We will draft Procedure Resolution for the Board's consideration for the application by James Metcalf for site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125 for use of the existing structures of clothing retail shop, change of use from the existing office at 6822 Route Diamond for the CBS zoning district. Accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for the review. Classifying actions type 2 under CECA, for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. Scheduling the public hearing for the application for October 6th, no earlier than 6:05 PM. We'll send this to the CAV in Dutchess County planning to review, and we need two planning board members to do a cycle visit.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the draft for your resolution? Second? All those in favor?
I oppose. It's Jen, Jen's motion for, Ellen Chong will be attached to this, I'm excited. Thank you so much. The third new application this evening is that of Bishop Travers, providing a group of 40, site plan, special requirement for ground mounted solar.
My name is Jeff Iris. I own a company called Hudson Solar and Battery Solutions, who are under contract to develop and build a small ground mounted solar array for Bishop Travers, sitting right here in the front row. I also want to say I have a license as a professional engineer in New York State, but I am not here in that class to do it. I have not the engineering record for this project, or are other engineers who are familiar with that. So this is for a small 15 kilowatt ground mounted solar array. It's located in the front yard. This is a six acre parcel in the RC5 district. The array would be right about up here. We have an application that's been accepted by the ZDA for an area variance, because it is in the front yard. You zoom out just a little bit, there really is no option, other than the front yard, because the house is way back, in fact, the property is large, mature trees, you know, the roof is heavily shaded as well, so. I'll explain why we picked this area, and why we think it's appropriate. There are probably only two other locations where it might be possible, and one would be in this area right in front of the house. The other one might be up in this area, although there are large growth trees that are going to spread out, shaded in this area up here. Up in this area, there's actually a small clearing that is ideal for a small system. We will go next to the, what kind of view? Are you driving him, or is he...
I'm just rendering.
So this is the rendering, we haven't actually built the thing yet, but it'll look like this. We threw it around over the site, this is Route 208, along here, this is the driveway coming in, and there's this kind of natural clearing where there isn't a lot of soil. And it turns out it's a pretty good site for a very small system. It would be set back about 86 feet from the edge of Route 208. I'll show you on the top of graphic map here, that there's a ridge that runs along 208 here, that is about eight or 10 feet high, that also provides some visual, some pretty good visual screening on the site. There's no proposed clearing to do this. There were some dead trees along here, because it got some light exposure, they were covered in vines, and they were starting to come down. The, there's a single-phase feeder that runs into the woods here, that actually provides power to the property. If these tall trees, if you left them, they'd fall and take them out, so they've been removed because they were killed by vines, and that's some vegetation that's dealt with here. And there's, knowing, just so we're zoning law for the town of Rydell, knowing that it'd be in front of the planning board, we got out there in April before the leaves came out of the trees, took some pictures, so, just a bunch of photographs, winter photos and screens. We took these on April 3rd, we took them along Route 208, knowing that the question from the planning board, well, it looks heavily shaded now, what's it going to look like in the winter? So, this is the ridge I was talking about, the speed limit along here is 55 miles per hour. If you're heading west, you're descending and turning to the left, so it's kind of an area where you're going to pay attention to what you're doing. Cars heading east are coming up the hill and making a left turn, and this ridge, eight-to-10 foot ridge runs along the whole area, along the whole stretch from driveway here, right down until you get almost down to the hill. So, the array would be back 86 feet behind this, the brush in this area here. Next series of pictures, you're at what you see as you move towards the west. Again, there's the ridge, so this ridge actually provides some pretty good natural screening. It's almost like you're trying to see something that's on top of the table, and it's set back from the edge of the table. So we're about 80 feet back, further south from the edge of this ridge here. The next picture is a little further west, the further west you get, the least visible, because the ridge gets bigger, the brush gets thicker, and then the last picture is the full western end of the property. At this point, it's probably 60 feet or something of bridge, or, coming right up off of 208. And then, there's a page called the Smur. So the Town of Rydell Solar Zoning Law actually has a photograph in it. I've looked at a lot of solar zoning laws, very rare, some photographs on the solar zoning law, but there is one there, I guess it's for the purpose. It talks about the requirements, the visual screen, the ground mounted solar project. This was an update that was passed by the Town Board in 2020. It said the visual screening objective is, it breaks up the visual area of the project, mitigates adverse aesthetic impacts when you use residences in public highways, and integrates the project with surrounding landscape, but they have this picture here, which is pretty much what the winter pictures look like for this project, except we don't have this picture, this site doesn't have the benefit of the eight-foot bridge along 208. I think we know that site planning is a tough aggressive path. So here's, this is 208, starts to curve here to the left, is directed west, and the ridge is right in this area here. So, one of the questions was that the pre-planning conferences, why not put it somewhere else? So, this is a historic building, I think you probably already know that, because you had a case earlier this year, where you approved the construction of a garage down here, so you want to know all that. It was carriage, the area was called the Grove, it was a carriage house that was designed, I guess, I think built by Standard White, the whole courses. It's, so it's a nice building. So it's citing the array, we considered four things. Could you see it from 208? We kind of excluded the neighbors, because the neighbors are so far away, located over here, way down here, way over here, there's no visual possible from that neighborhood. So, four things. Did you see it from 208, heading westbound? Did you see it from 208, heading eastbound? Did you see it coming into the property? Because it's a nice building, it's an historic building, most people wouldn't want to see a solar array from this sort of historic building. And then, could you see it going out, which is probably the least important? So, what I just showed was, when you're heading west, and you're heading east, we think it's highly obscure, it won't be visible. When you're coming into the property, and you're getting a nice view of the house here, again, from the rendering that I showed, the trees are pretty thick along here, you're looking down at the house here, it's very pretty, it's a nice stone wall, you won't see it. The only time you will see it is when you're leaving the property for a brief period, because there's a bit of a channel right in here between the trees, where you would see it. So our rationale is that putting it up here, you are going to see it from 208. In the winter, sorry, if you're quick, and you're not the driver, and you look left here, you'll see the house briefly. In the winter, you can see more of the house down here. If the array was in this location or this location, you definitely see it from 208. So, we think this location is the best location, because you can't see it from 208, and you can't see it when you're entering, you see the house, a nice house, and you only get brief ones of it. And there's just one other point I want to make about archaeological study at the pre-conference. There was a request that we do an archaeological Phase 1A and Phase 1B. The owner, Bishop Travers, already paid to do that earlier this year, it's fairly decent, I don't think archaeological studies age like wetland studies or something like, but they, there was one done, the Phase 1A, which is a literature study, determined that the Grove, which is a collection of buildings here, I think their wording was, no significant historic features were associated with the Grove, natural, national register listed historic resource for accounting. Art General recommends no further archaeological investigation. It also said that the Phase 1A and B identified no archaeological interest in the property. So, given that you just did it, I also included the application, application request, that the board consider not requiring another one. We've got a quote for another one, and it's another four and a half thousand dollars. The Phase 1A, the literature search, I think will be the same literature search that they produced earlier this year, and the Phase 1B, which is some sample digging, in the pre-conference, the board said that they didn't see any point of digging along the road, because there's probably already been great digging disturbances that were done along the road. There's no excavation required for the site, for the mounting of the array itself, they're building mounted on eight ground screws, three inches diameter, they're putting it in the ground. The only excavation is an electrical trench, which will run along here on the side of the road, the utility pole, that terminates that single-phase feeder that's in the works here. So, there's a short, 75 feet maybe along here, of electrical trench, and then there's probably about 100 something, 300, 400 feet of electrical trench here. This is a small system, it's a, it's an AC system, we use AC microburners, so it's 4 amps, a 40 volts, that's about the same size circuit as your electric clothes dryer, electric water heater perhaps, or a small RV charger. So the trench will only be about six inches wide, this is planned to be a trencher, six inches wide, 24 inches deep, and the disturbance is relatively minor compared to the disturbance that was done with the garage, where they had to go down and force five feet for it to find it or something. Like the board can say...
So I took a look at this, and Jeff has noted, this is a significant historic property in the town, so certainly we're sending this off to HAFAC for review. Due to the location, jurisdictional determination would be required, submitted to JV?
Sorry?
The jurisdictional determination?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's in progress, so that's good, we all know about that process, so see where that goes. Primarily, I think this is a review of, you know, the impact on historic property and the historic nature of the area. The location of the panel is in front of the house, it's certainly not to be considered, but that is why it's before the ZDA, they're taking a look at the placement, obviously being in front of the structure. And as Jeff noted, they are behind a vegetated berm, and there's vegetation and all around them, something to consider. The only other comment, thought that I had, is regarding the 1A and 1B, I did see the requests to, for the board to waive the 1A and 1B, and I'm not a specialist on these, but I think the 1A probably would be the same. The 1B, the test holes, where I think a lot of the discussion would come in, as to whether or not it would be necessary or not, we typically do require those on historic properties for the, what's called the APE, or the area of potential effect, I believe it is. So the APE that was done previously, you know, was only done for the garage area down here, it wasn't done where you would be disturbing the ground where these are going in, so that's the difference in the two studies. Like I said, Craig and Mel, he can certainly speak to the... Like I said, Craig and Mel, he can certainly speak to the 1A more than I can, better than I can. But really that's my only comment for the board is just the consideration of the historic nature of the property. Any other thoughts you have that might be relevant to the location of the 1A and 1B here? But I think we already submitted to the CVA.
I think it's up for tonight.
Oh, it's up tonight, sorry. Yeah, we'll talk about it later.
Did Harkins, did you ask for, or did they provide just a cost for the 1B? I'm agreeing with you that the 1A is not going to change.
They, I did not ask them, I asked them for a quote on the 1A and 1B. What I asked for was dispensation, given that they're probably going to do a cut and paste on the 1A. And they said if we're asked for a 1A, it would be the total price of the 1A.
And they indicated that they would have to be tied together as a report?
They said if that's what I asked for, that's what they would give me. I could ask for a 1B.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, I believe that you, you happen to be clear about this, that you expect most of the trenching to parallel with driveway.
Yes.
And there was only two small areas where you...
This section here and this section of the midsection of the driveway.
Well, I, you know, what you're describing is a minimal amount of disturbance using the screw pile method or in favor of pre-pest or, or displaced puddings, which would have a lot more ground disturbance. What if your contractor can't put in the screw piles?
They can put them in solar.
We've had the experience before where halfway through the project, oh, we can't, oh, there's rock down there, but for whatever reason, they can't plant the screw pile. So they end up ogre-ing a hole and putting a big footing in what could have been a very sensitive area had we, you know, investigated it beforehand. And also Harkins' report, first of all, it's very heavily weighted toward pre-contact discoveries and really doesn't pay a lot of attention to what might be relevant to the 19th century development of the site. And one of the central concerns of the archaeologists is whether or not the resources that are concealed in the ground are National Register listed. This is a National Register listed site already. I mean, we know the site. So discovering more about it is going to, you know, it's going to qualify under, I think it's criteria of C, which is that the site has previously yielded or could continue to yield information about, important information about the past. Also, as Jim pointed out, the area of potential effect, usually you have something like seven and a half meters on either side of your shovel test that's been considered to be, you know, vetted or, you know, fair game. When you go outside of that perimeter, you're getting into unknown areas. And especially with this site, because there's, the landsman's kill passes right through to the border or near the border of the property. And you're talking about an elevated plateau that would be a prime site for hunting and, you know, setting up an encampment, it'd be a very defensible spot. So the likelihood of finding pre-contact settlement, especially because the site is historic and may not have been touched during the 19th century. I'm not an archaeologist, but an archaeologist would be the best person to weigh in on that. And this is, you know, is very much why we're interested in making those recommendations. It's not just to generate work for archaeologists because there are very significant resources in this town that we hear a great deal about and it's part of our common heritage. So, you know, I'd be cautious to treat it too lightly. But if you are doing a significant ground disruption and you're trenching and following closely to previously disturbed areas, you know, I think that gives merit to your application. But I don't think I would be willing to just waive the requirement, you know, without, you know, maybe have an APAC.
Well, it will be referred to.
Wait.
I was thinking that it was a new application. I would, let's just ask Harkins.
Okay.
If they were to simply, I'm thinking two things. I think I agree with you that the Phase 1A is not going to change. And it just seems a shame to have to pay for that all over again. I think that's an expense that you shouldn't have to incur. So I'd like that question to be posed of them. We'll have better information when we get that answered. And the other, your question on what if they can't just do these simple things? I think there might be some agreement on it in front of the applicant that if they get into a situation where they have to go further, they come back and tell us. And then you have a chance to, you know, decide at that time when they're needing further examination of the area if more extensive excavation was required. Does that make sense?
In the subject, I've built hundreds of ground mounted solar systems in my career. I've run into many situations where we were, say, pounding posts in the ground and you hit something and your solution is to now excavate a hole, sink the post down, try to clear it enough so you can pin to the rock or else, or a concrete footing to sit around it. We picked this system for the reason that it wouldn't leak. As I said, it only has, first of all, eight holes. There's four for each of the two arrays. And then the ground screws themselves are two and a half inches diameter still pipe. If they run into rock, they drip, just like you would drill, pre-drill a hole for drilling a party. So you drill a hole that's slightly smaller than the minor diameter of the thread and then the thread, the grounds are in there. And they've, we've had that discussion, they've quoted the price, what that's going to cost. And I'm aware that that's a risk that I have to develop eight holes, but they will not be excavated and played on.
Okay, so let's, I think we've talked about archaeology. I'll open it up now to other planning board members for comments or questions.
I have a couple of questions. Is this used for the garage or part of the house? You said for AC. I'm just curious because the scale of the house is so big. What is it using such a small system for?
The AC, we put alternating current. So it's electric current, alternating current. The feeder runs down here. There's a whole utility pole located right here with a transformer on top of it. And then from that transformer, 240 volts AC. Runs into an electric meter that's on this pole. And then the electricity runs through a buried trench, which they trace. It runs this way and then this way down into this area of the house. So all of the power comes into this one. What we're going to do is we're going to intertie literally beneath that electric meter and inject power into the line, weight load the electric meter. What that'll do is it'll supply, first of all, it'll supply the loads of the house because they're operating at a lower voltage. So it'll offset, it potentially slow, well, it'll always slow down when it's operating, but potentially stop the electric meter from spinning by supplying the house directly. So it'll reduce what you purchase from the central housing. And then if it's generating more power continuously than the house is using, it will lift its voltage up and push current the other way back into the central housing. So it reduces its electric bill regardless of what it's using the electricity for.
Got it?
Yeah.
It's a different AC.
Totally. I was just like, we explored solar panels. It was like the volume we would need on a way smaller house was so much more than that. So I'm like, how could that be a benefit? Like, it must be so little, like you're running a dryer.
It'll generate about 30% of his annual usage. I think we wanted it to be bigger. I would like to sell a larger system, we would have liked it to be bigger. But the reality of the shading in the site that Randbrin showed is that if you paint this thing any larger, what you would get from it would just plummet. There's no financial return. If we extended this east and west, you just wouldn't get the return. And as it is, this system can achieve what's called 70% TSRF. So it's a factor the state of New York necessarily uses to measure the effectiveness of solar systems. Their requirement is that systems be 70% or higher. And if we can achieve exactly 70%, we make this anything bigger, it brings them the average of those 70%. So it's really the biggest system we can do. It'll generate, it'll reduce his bills by 30%.
Anyone else?
It looks from your rendering like there would be room for a third pan between the other two without shading?
No.
Other one?
Yeah, that, no, that would create what's called interworld shading. So you'd get something out of it, but not as much than you're going to draw down with the SRF. The winter sun angle here in the Hudson Valley, summer 21st, it's only 23 degrees of the horizon at noon. And you would get basically nothing of the natural. And that's all part of the calculations that we're exercising.
Jim, draft procedural resolution?
The draft procedural resolution for the board's consideration for the application by Christopher Travers for site line special use permit under Town Board Chapter 125 for installation of ground mounted solar panels of 500 through 308 within the RC H zoning district, excepting the application supporting documents that have further review. Classifying the action as unlisted under secret for which supporting environmental quality review is not required. Excuse me, in a public hearing for October 6th or earlier than 6:05 PM. Will send it to the CAB, hip cock, and Dutchess County planning for review. We need to plan board members to your second.
We'd like to vote on. I'll vote on. They have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution.
So moved.
Second? Second? All those are favorable? I oppose extension, motion varies. Hope you have a successful site visit. We've had some good luck lately with people sort of sticking up before we get there exactly what the plan was of this would be. So if we could do that, that would be...
Rachel, I mean, I want to make sure to stay down.
Well, we'll be in touch through email to pick on mutually convenient time and take it from there.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
May I go ahead with the suggestion for the future? Um, with this application, I know that there's still a question about the Phase 1B, you know, based on the cost. If you decide that you don't need a Phase 1B, it might be helpful to include as a condition in the resolution about what was just discussed about no further excavation and just kind of sticking to that. Maybe even Mr. Irish can provide a little narrative about the procedures for, you know, if they hit a problem, like drill down procedures.
Well, that's what I was trying to get him to address, that would maybe be willing to accept that as a condition, show the encounter or problem when we're undertaking the work. So your suggestion about making it a condition of putting it in the group of resolution, I think is a good one.
Yeah, and I've always been confused about that because in the, in the language of the Phase 1A, its purpose is to determine the need for the Phase 1B. So I've always been confused by the, so often you just include the other.
I agree. Okay. The last new application for this evening is that of Susan Gollum, 38 Russell Avenue Site Fan, Special Use Plan of the Repriment Solar.
All right, hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Mitch O'Malley, project manager for Suncom, and this is Susan, the homeowner. We are looking to install a reprise solar array at 38 Russell Avenue in Rhine Cliff, New York. The system will be on the south facing side of the roof, as you can see here. And it's going to consist of 24 control modules with 24 end phase micro burners. The system will be used for personal use, so pretty much it's going to offset her bills and then anything extra will go back to Central Hudson for crediting for her account only. The system will produce 10.44 TW DC, which you can see, it's kind of blurry, but it's written down here. The panels will be parallel to the roof, so only sit about two to three inches in height off of the roof. And we have reached out to her neighbors to see if they had any objections. They both gave their approvals. And we are here because she lives in the RCH overlay district. And we need your approval to do this. And I'm here for any questions.
Jim?
Took a look at this one. The only comments I have is, again, we are here because during the RCH and along the scenic road. We did provide the note that we'd ask for that the panels should be at least two and a, two and a half inches below the roof line. The panels will be visible from Morton Road. I can bring up a few more if anyone wants to see it. But if you're driving by on Morton, you will see, you know, you'll be able to see them from the road. But this is not historic property from what I can tell. They are closing a buried service line, but again, not being historic, we could acquire the 1A or 1B. And I think the application primarily review of the visibility from the road and considerations of the historic nature of the area, even though this property itself is not.
Plenty of rumors.
I think I have trouble seeing where it would have an adverse impact on identified resources. It's not visible from, or in any significant way from the scenic road. It's not a historic building. I think it would be nice to see a view from the street.
This is the property of one of the...
But it runs on Russell Avenue. Yeah, and this is from Morton Road?
Yeah.
And this is, this is not a listed historic property?
I took a look, I think it's not.
Because it looks like a rather old house.
Do you know that or what?
It looks like a rather old house. It's not new construction or is it a reproduction house?
It's, I don't know the date. I thought in the 2017, and it was very renovated to the inside.
Yeah.
So it's old at that time?
It wasn't, yes, in the 1980s, they did a survey.
Anyone else? If not, then we'll go to the draft procedural resolution.
Jim, I think we have a couple of questions. I, so you've addressed it's not on the historic structure of house. Is the district Rhine Cliff part of National or State Register Historic Places as a digital?
Yes, we're still going to refer to APAC.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was wondering if the dis, so we've discussed that the house itself is not on the National or State Historic List. And I was wondering if the Rhine Cliff district itself is listed as the National or State Register of Historic Places? It's the landmark.
It's in the landmark district, so we'll, so we'll still go to APAC for review, but not for the site per se?
Yeah, I was asking if it could potentially have been considered a type two action. But under 617.5C15, which allows for solar arrays on existing structures, but it does provide that the structure is not listed as a historic place, which it is, but also can't be listed, located in a district on a historic places. So that's why I was just asking.
And I'm sorry, you said it is part of the Rhine Cliff overlay, the panel overlay?
Right at the, right at their end.
I was going to say, I thought it ended that puzzle out there.
All right, so procedural resolution for the board's consideration. Alright, so procedure resolution for the board's consideration of the application by Susan Gollum for site line and special use permit under town code chapter one, two, five, for installation of roof mounted solar panels of thirty eight Russell Avenue in the R C H and R C O, excepting the application supporting documents is adequate to review by the planning board. We are going to classify the action as unlisted under secret, which for any environmental quality review is not required. We'll schedule a public hearing for October sixth or earlier than six oh five P M. Even location will be sending this to C A B, W A C, APAC, and Dutchess County Planning for any comments they would have. And we need two planning board members for the second.
I'll let you go.
Okay.
Go on.
I'll go with Tom.
Hi.
I thought you were.
Today you got it. I appreciate it. Sorry. May I have a motion to accept the draft procedure resolution? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Motion varies. We can touch to schedule the site visit. That concludes the, uh, new applications for this evening. The first set of public hearing is that of the May sixth thirty six River Road Site Fund Review for the installation of H V A C units. Can you repeat?
Hello.
Come on, we would be curious what you're into doing after public hearings.
I'm looking to, well, it's technically an H V A C condenser unit outside of the house application. As the planning board members are aware, those units are there due to the fact that the H V A C company, um, within their scope of work and contract, were paid to go through this process on my behalf and actually did not do that. So they are existing. There are two H V A C condenser units on the north side of my home at six thirty six River Road, which is, uh, does fall within a historic district and are visible from the scenic road. So it's quite a shame. And, um, I apologize to the board members for that. We're here to figure out what to do about it.
Jim, you have any new comments?
No, no comments from last time. I remember the last time, maybe they just said this is an application for, related scenic use along the road, historic preservation and consistency of property.
Was there a site visit conducted?
Yes.
Would you like to report on it?
Um, they're the only, they're the place, the only place that they could, they think replaced my house. And when you said you'd be more than happy to put mature plants in, driving by, if you're coming from the south, you can't see them. And if you're going from the north, it's on a higher, it's higher up than the roads. You gotta be looking at the house purposely. Prior to the site visit, I driven that road dozens of times and never saw it. And now I see it, I'm like.
Yeah, me too.
So.
And I was there with Tom, and I actually had a different read on, um, the placement of these units and the application. I, I think it's really unfortunate that this was not filed beforehand because there were some really basic mistakes that could have been corrected before the installation took place. For instance, the line sets are supposed to go up and follow the architecture. So they're supposed to follow the slope of the roof or the lines of the siding. And they kind of go diagonally at a forty five degree angle. It doesn't match the roof line.
Which I never saw until you pointed it out.
I know. To me, it just, it's one of those, you know, glaring things. And I also see it every time I drive by. And I, there is a, a level area of about four feet to the east side of the house underneath the window, uh, where one of the units could probably be placed. I was told that that is where the sewer line comes out. But there is a, one of the reasons why you don't develop on top of the sewage line is because of access issues, if you should need to clean it out. And there happens to be a cleanup right next to. So, and also, you know, these units are, uh, well in front of the center line of the home. It would be, I think, preferable to have them located farther back. Uh, so if one could be located here in this flat area and another one here with a planting, substantial planting in front of it, I think that would be preferable to what's there. It's going to be, it's going to be hard because there's a very nice mature tree here, so there's some shading effect. It might be hard to get good plant growth there that'll obscure the installation.
Yeah, I, I also talked, but I talked to Fanta Gardner who did the renderings and they came up with specific native plants that would thrive there.
For me, I would like to see a, a better installation that's more respectful of the importance. It's, it's a wonderful house and I, I have to appreciate that you invited us inside and showed, showed some of the wonderful work that you've done. It's really a terrific little house. And the fact that it's, it's got this kind of dorky installation of the heat pump system, I think detracts from the appeal. And I would like to see it done better.
I understand. I respect that.
We get written reports and take that and see what we. Are we all ready up to planning board members?
You had the expect come up. Thank you.
A what? Yeah, we had a.
And.
Thank you.
Ward agreed with what I said.
Well, we don't have any word.
They didn't give.
We must because I had, I had an email from.
Oh, well, I just asked Gretchen and she said, so I apologize.
I saw something.
Alright, thanks for bringing that up, Jim. Well, you look for that. It, um, it did a texture without the rendering, which is the way it is.
Yeah, there is one.
So we can get the context of what we're running to them out.
That's also not the street view. That's not the view from the road. That's the view from due north and slightly west. So that's the view from the road with the plantings rendered in.
Like from this view, for example, and I know maybe it would affect the look of the landscape from the other angle, but if those boxwoods wasn't one of those, or a sort of higher pine tree or something, you probably fully cover it from that.
Well, we, we would fully cover it. This is like, you know, this is like the initial planting and I would be happy to do it. And I also mentioned to both APAC members who came, and I think the two of you that I, there's a place where you could put like a large tree, um, here from in front of the road that would really obscure it and not have to be up against the house in the shade. Because there's only a sliver of area when you're driving by, if you're not keeping your eye on the road where you see it. It's probably like five or ten, five seconds for people on the road. And the other problem is that, um, oh, that would, that's it, yeah. So for some reason, I guess the ground is higher on the back window, so even the smaller unit, and I'm not sure which of you were there when we talked about it, it would be in front of the window. If we put it instead of Q one in the front, so yeah, if we put that on the back window, it would actually, you could sit in the living room and you'd be looking at it out the window. And it's also very expensive to move them.
Well, at minimum, I think you, I would, I think putting some landscaping closer to the roadside, that can, just in that one pocket, when someone's driving by, at least it will, it will contribute to.
I would do both. I would do, you know, both further away toward the road and then also around it. I mean, I need them as much as you do.
Yeah, but if you, um, if your contractor did this and you weren't happy, then they should do what you asked for.
I didn't, I can send you my email records. They literally would not respond to me at all. I mean, I could sue them, yeah. But, you know, that's more money. But they literally did not respond to me until I showed them the town communication. So, um, they're, you know, and I've heard terrible things about them since then.
Other planning board members?
After like dozens of emails and phone calls.
How could we see the effect of a more effective landscaping solution?
We can ask the board.
That's what I, that's what I would like to see.
Um, I, I think Lisa's brought up something important to that, how this planting plan can be improved to provide greater screening. And, um, I don't need this to sound weird, it's for the sample, it's already there. So we're not delaying installation if we ask you to come back with a more detailed screening plan, which I think would go toward answering some of the questions that have been raised.
Right. And also I think I misspoke at the time of the site visit when I said that the town code states a preference for vegetative screening as opposed to a fence.
Right, because that was proposed as an option, right.
Uh, maybe you can help me, I don't know if that's in appendix A or if there is a, indeed a preference or a short sentence.
Well, I think, I don't know, Jim, can you be working for that? I think when you get into fencing and screening, you know, it's supposed to be somewhat visible. You know, the screening, the fencing is, you're supposed to be able to see through it. So that's how the code reads for fencing. If you go in that direction, you're not getting the screening necessarily that you want. We had that a couple of months ago in another, um, installation.
I think I, I propose an option of doing both, so, you know.
Well, certainly if you're asking me to come back, you can give us some options. If you want to put in some fencing as part of an overall screening plan.
And I did present that. I did present screen, you know, fence options.
But I, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, we love you to come back with a, a specific planting plan, not just generic, but taking into consideration of Lisa's comments about something that cuts off that angle that we're looking at. I, I, I'm very disappointed in the company that will do what you have relayed to us and done, and yet I don't also want to penalize you and, yeah, I get Craig's point, I, I know we possibly be incurred in having to go back at this. So from my perspective, right now, to get the very best screening plan that you can get is, is the solution that I would prefer.
I'm happy to come back with that.
Okay. So, um, do we want to continue this? Let me ask if there's anyone here in the public, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak for this application?
I just, I don't want to lose track of the fact that I also find the way that the line sets are installed on the side of the house to be distracting and.
You can't see it from the road.
I can see it.
Well, let's, let's wait until we get the next.
And actually, it's one of those things that does not follow the APAC handbook, where there's a APAC handbook that gives tips on, on the best, as is the Secretary of the Interior Standards, gives, you know, best practices.
Are there any photos of that?
Yes. APAC has that in there.
Are there any photos of the line sets?
I didn't know that that was a problem, so I didn't.
I didn't take one. And you can almost see it in the, it's a view here.
On the left, left side of the screen above. And it's white, the same color as the house.
Well, let's see if we do landscape plan and also on screen, it can be such a way as to cut down the visibility of that.
I mean, you.
We're talking about, and she's talking about the tree.
I know, but you could obscure the whole house and then you can't see the house. I just, I think there's a better way to do that and.
I mean, I'd be happy to replace it, but that wasn't something that was brought to me as, you know, the, the H V A C units, you could definitely see. I mean, if you want to have more, more people come and opine on it, that's fine too.
I think we should just see something for landscape, just that little pocket from the road, ensure you still see the house, but just effectively screen that corner and let's go in. Um, there's no public comment, so a good item of motion to continue the public hearing until October sixth. So, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention?
Thank you.
And if you look at APAC, it says the, from the site visit, here's your daughter.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next public hearing for this evening is that of John Holm, two twenty four South Bridge Site Fund Special Use Permit for Solar Installation.
How are you guys?
Good.
Good. So, just to recap, um, so I'm Shad and we're Empire Solar Solutions. Uh, we're proposing installation at the above stated address. Um, we're proposing a ground mount system. The total system size is fourteen point seven two kilowatts, consisting of thirty two R C panels, each rated at four hundred and sixty watts. The structure will be installed on the rear end of the property, covering a total area of seven hundred and twenty five point three one square feet. Uh, we also did already do a site visit, which you are able to see like the layout of how the two structures are going to be placed in addition to, um, the screening on top of the ample spring that already exists. Can I listen?
I don't have any new comments. Um, I think last time, uh, we discussed the fact that the pre-con, the plans have been updated, so there's no need for a button permit. So we still did discuss the need to apply for a New York State jurisdictional determination. Did you do that?
Wait, you said on time? What'd you say?
Did you, did you apply for the New York State D E C jurisdictional determination?
The D E C?
We need, we didn't need a wetland permit because you moved the trenching. Uh, we had discussed how a jurisdictional determination would be needed because of the weapons in front of the lot. I guess you did not, you didn't apply to that.
Honestly, I don't really recall. And this would be to determine.
Um, new rule came into effect on January first from the state that they have, I guess you say, increased interest in seeing what happens within certain distances of wetlands and rural pools and things like that.
Okay.
The D E C has a hundred foot off of the state, like the town does, but they also have three hundred feet that they, they have as a review area. But they also include eight hundred feet if you're within a rural pool. And we don't have any mapping that shows us where rural pools are, and the mapping that we have for wetlands is like thirty years old, and so it's not efficient. So I think, so basically the way that the law's been written, and then what we're going to do with applicants to make sure that we don't want to follow any of these state regulations, having anyone in eight hundred feet of wet area that might be a rural pool, so it's a wetland, apply to the jurisdictional determination to make sure that you don't have an issue. So, uh, we did talk about it in the pre-cons and we hope to apply so that we can make sure that we get that clock started.
Yeah.
It's like a hundred days. They have ninety days to respond and then you have ten days you have to submit physical letter to them. And if they don't respond by a hundred days, a hundred and one days, you've got to file your permit and you don't hear from them. Um, so we're not sure where the jurisdictional determination stands, and that's an outside agency, unfortunately, maybe middle of the status of that. But other than that, um, the other items that we talked about, you know, had been, had to change for the last submission so that we didn't have a wetland permit issue from the town. Uh, setbacks were another site visit that I'd recommended, just taking a look whether or not any additional landscaping would be necessary to scrub panels, but I don't have anything to do with last time's permitting person.
Another we asked about the site visit.
I thought it was good placing. Um, there's a bit of a gnaw between the road and where they're going to be. So they're kind of like, you know, depression. Um, and then with the house and stuff, you really aren't going to be able to see them unless you're looking for it. And the other thing is. And the other thing is, they're not, they're taking one tree out and putting replacement with three other trees for it. And, uh, definitely because of the trees, they can't put it on the house.
No. Uh, is there anyone here from the public? Any other questions for the county members? Well, we really are at a standstill, though, without the information from New York State in terms of jurisdictional determination.
Understood. So could I ask a question? Um, could we potentially grant approval with the contingency of that passing? Okay.
No, Michael, I don't think we're in a position to do that.
Okay.
And we have asked if we want all of our applicants to go and get that before they make the determination.
Okay.
We just don't think we can make an exception in this case.
To be completely honest, uh, I just am not positive on the answer. Could I, like, instead of booking another hearing, could I, like, call somebody that would apply? Because that wouldn't be me that directly does it, but I could reach out to the person that does and make it tell me the answer within the next two minutes. I'm happy to go to the back of the line and, like, wait for everybody again.
Well, we would need to have a copy of the correspondence between the D E C and the applicant, or you as the applicant's representative.
Yeah.
So I, I just don't think without the actual documentation would matter.
It's a little bit of a delay, you know, about two weeks.
We can, we can, we can go out two weeks, uh, we can vote a public hearing, and you can, and what we, what Jim, what we've accepted in the past to keep it moving along is documentation that we have made the application.
Yeah.
For D E C, so that, but that does not, you still have to unfortunately wait that potentially ninety day period that they have, that they are entitled to in terms of them that do this.
Okay.
Theoretically, if you have not yet applied for that, I would say minimum of your ninety days out, we're going to take them.
Okay.
I'm showing from the pre-con, but we had discussed that you might apply, but we do need, we need either something in writing from the D E C stating that there's no issue, or we need a copy of the letter that you submitted to them, asking them for their final response, and then showing us that you're one hundred and one days out. So if you had applied by when we had a pre-con...
Well, the only, um, like document in here that I have that says about, like, the wetland permit, says to Ryan Beck, it doesn't say...
Let's have it.
Okay.
Your ninety days would seem to be up on the sixteenth, if my numbers are right, on the sixteenth, so...
There's no way we didn't. I just really can't remember off the top of my head.
So I'm, I'm showing, I'm showing you my notes, even someone that said, I think it was you, you had applied, but if you haven't heard from them, you've still got about two weeks, so I think that they can respond. Once you hit that date that you're on your ninety days out, send them a physical letter, either mail it all to me.
Okay.
And then they have until a hundred days out to respond back to. If you don't have it by then, just provide us with a copy of your letter, and then we know you're a hundred and one days out, and that's just like, we need something in writing, put the files, and show us if you, if you don't care, or if you can back us up, it's okay, or if you had issues.
Okay, understood.
The date that you're showing of the pre-con, that they were indicating that that date that they had already applied, so going out two weeks might fall within that.
It might get us past a hundred, but we need that, you know, we need that letter to make sure. Yeah, if it passed a hundred days already, then we should be fine, but we need a copy of that letter that you sent that to them. One way or another, we need five, we either need something from D E C to show you, or we need you to show us a copy of the letter you submitted to D E C.
Okay.
And then we all have the seven days.
So, I have a motion to continue the public hearing of two weeks, which would be registered on the fifteenth. Have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close extension.
Okay, so this means that, so as long as we provide proof that we have been communicating with them, we send that over to you guys?
We do want, um, you need to buy us with the documentation that you applied to them.
Okay.
That would give us the day when we apply, when we calculate the ninety days and then attend to get to a hundred.
From when we apply, okay.
You need to, if you haven't heard from them in the ninety days, you still need to write a letter to them.
Okay, understood.
And then they have ten days to reply to that letter.
Okay.
So we've got two things you're looking for.
Make, make sure you look at the rules on how to do it. It might, I can't remember, you have to do it, you know, with a signature, or you have to do a certified mail. Just make sure you need to send the letter the right way. It makes me sick, I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, and this is completely separate from the actual certified mailing, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so what was the date, the new date?
It's...
Okay, beautiful, thank you. All right, hug it.
Well, uh, the next public hearing is that Gloria, you know, Rosney, sixty-seven to sixty-one, the newest group, site plan specialties permit and wetland permit for demolition, the existing building, construction, the addition, and the properties have broken mine for the accessories.
Good evening, my name today is Freeman, I'm the architect for the project. September fifth is ninety days, but we'll just get ahead of that one, so...
Oh, okay, well, most of that can work, so.
That was easy. Um, so if you could go down to the second page, I'm just going to start there, we'll come back to the site plan. Um, so just the questions of determinations from the last month, we are adding a twenty-eight by twenty-four foot addition to the wetland side of the property. It is in the style of the existing home, so a single, a single story addition, relatively low roof line, it's actually lower than any part of the house. The outside, right, so the, there is a front porch on this that the owner greatly enjoys, the windows are almost to the floor, so across the front of the house, we are replicating that side of the windows, down to about twelve to fifteen inches above the floor. And then noted on the front elevations, the siding is to match existing, a wood clavering siding. Shingles are to match existing, um, and standard asphalt shingle. Let me see what else. There is a new entry porch proposed. Right now, we have a charming set of nineteen-sixties concrete steps that run right up to the front door. So there is a four foot by eight foot front porch that is proposed, um, five steps up to it, fur treads, fur decking for the porch, wooden handrail, and then a new concrete walkway from the street that does come up to that porch, and you'll see that on the front elevation. Lighting is proposed, so three Scotch style lights, one at the front door, and then four across the front where the garage doors are, and then two flood style lights, um, on both sides of the garage. And I believe that should be enough for this page, so if you can move back to the first page, please. So there were some questions from last month. There is excavation being done on the site, we are making in a crawl space. So while the outside perimeter, the foundation will be down to frost, hopefully not too much rock, um, there will be some soil taken from that crawl space. That's going to be used to infill the garage that's being removed, and then infill the mobile home that's being removed. Underneath the mobile home right now, there is a buried septic tank, and then in the back of the mobile home, there is the buried cesspool. And there is also in back of the mobile home right now, kind of an indebted patio. So we're not removing soil from the site. I also calculated quickly, I do not believe we are bringing any again.
How much, do you know how, how conditions are on the way?
I don't have that with me, so it's just moving essentially from the, um, crawl space area.
Yeah, no, you're not, isn't there a, too many, if you, if you're moving or...
I don't think it's that much at all.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
So, no, it's not, it's, it's particularly, it's very hard to tell at this point, we do have a full ba-, a semi-full basement, but I, my guess is we're going to hit rock at some point fairly quickly, so... Um, other than that, the last proposal had a change from last month, there is a new concrete sidewalk that we see that's coming up from the roadway and then up to a set of steps that lead onto a new landing. And I think the only other comment from the last month, there is a question, I know someone there had a suggestion to widen the door into the dining room area so it didn't appear, it couldn't be easily renovated and closed in, um, that's been widened out to five feet. I don't know if that's visible, whether we have a plan or not, this is actually in the... Just a little bit older, please. Okay. So, um, I, I can point, but on, on the last one that should be in your packet that was submitted, on August twelfth, there is a door shown being widened. I think that's about all, it's due from last month.
Jim, anything?
Nope, nothing new from that, ready on the Tuesday, Wednesday, I guess. It's in my calendar, September sixth, Saturday, I write a letter, I'll send it out registered.
You're right, I thought it just on Saturday.
Yeah.
Site visit? Do you want to come back to this thing?
I think I dropped the ball on site visit. Did anyone else?
It's not telling, like...
Make an arrangement? Yeah, I think, I think that's on me because I said, sure.
All right, you're all punished. So where do they have to continue? Um, the question is, so you're going to write them a letter?
Right.
And then they have another...
Ten days.
Ten days, which would take us...
June sixteenth.
June nine sixteen, which is the day after, so we can, we're forced to go out a month, correct? Which allows us to list that little site visit.
Another bite at the app.
All right. Okay, right, you're good?
No.
I'm looking up. So Craig, you will take the lead?
I will take, yes, I will make a man.
And, um, is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment on this application? All right, during that, I would have to turn the motion to continue the public hearing until nine fifteen. Did you make that? I thought you were saying... Oh, ten six, I'm sorry, ten six. Apologies. Second? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, thank you.
All right, good luck.
Aye, thank you. I will be in touch. All right.
I will check out who's scheduled to come in.
Here we share.
Here we share, all right. Sharon, you're in. Okay, I'll, I'll go, I'll go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Uh, the next public hearing receiving is that of Dog's Nest, one of two site plans with a site plan. Would you like?
Good.
My name is Craig Hightower, I'm the lead of project developer and the manager of project management. Uh, we've been contracted to develop and manage the installation of a seventy-eight kilowatt ground mounted solar array of one-two south lands. Uh, as you all know, now the biggest question here is why is it being placed where it is, which is on the southeast corner of the property?
It's the second, um, rectangle area on the open.
So, and I've been working hard to answer this question since twenty-twenty-two, so I've been on this a long time. Um, it's a big parcel, uh, lots of room, but down here in this bottom corner, which, uh, you know, shares the property with Southlands Foundation, uh, is the lowest point of topography on that field, um, and also, uh, there's a vague interconnection, um, hurdle that needs to be addressed here, uh, which is the primary service meter for the property comes way over here on the south land side. Um, there are utility easement that runs with overhead power lines coming across the, on the south end of the property line. So not even on the, um, south of the property or on the owner's property. Overhead power lines that come just over here to this corner and then bury underground, uh, sixteen hundred feet to the actual house that's where it lands on the transformer and gets served to the property. So there's the two main issues for why it's here, is one, the topography to address the screening concern, which is, you know, that's been objected to one the whole time, it's how can we make this as least visible as possible to neighbors? So because of the low topography there, um, it's up in that corner, the, and the geometry from the view shed at Southlands, the more into this field that array goes and elevates its topography, the harder it becomes to screen. So that, that angle of view becomes wider, and it will require much more unnatural screening, and, you know, really kind of, you know, would defeat the purpose of trying to screen it because of just so much of it. So, uh, having it in this little corner, you know, allows for natural screen already on the south line, but also a very limited screen here. Uh, I've submitted ring rings recently, hopefully Gretchen got the, um, newest copy of it, but, uh, right now there's black willows screened that have already grown, uh, six feet like this year, this growing season, and they've gotten really tall over fast, so those will really fill in, the owners are going to top them so they don't get to their full height and they grow upwards, um, but we're already in the process, we've been in the conversations with Southlands to install evergreen screen, so we're not only, uh, doing the black willows, uh, but we're going to install five, uh, Canadian hemlocks, and then a white pine right in this corner that kind of fills in that open gap between the natural screen and the installed screen. Uh, so that's one part of it is, um, you know, that this makes the most viable solution on the property to screen the array anywhere inside of this big field right here, which some of you bits in the inside. Problem two is being able to interconnect, so, um, because this is a primary service into the property on this line right here, the only chance to tie this to the electric grid is somewhere on this line, so it's either over here on the meter, which would require trenching onto somebody else's property, which we don't want to do. Uh, if we tap into a pole here, also requires trenching into somebody else's property that we don't want to do. Um, but our proposed trench path comes along this way, on this side of the array, and taps into the customer own pole, it's already there, um, it's already on their property, so no construction, trenching, digging, um, digging pine will be on the south side of that property line, so it stays there. So, um, aside of that, I've also seen a letter from HAC, right? Said it was, um, you know, with proper screen, doesn't impact the property in any way. Um, also from C N Hudson, which is a requirement from the last hearing, um, I submitted a letter from them stating that the C N easement ends on that property back there. And then also a letter from an engineer stating that, like, there, you know, there's another field on the other side, I don't know if you have the parcel. So, so, you know, there's been some mention of, you know, coming over here and putting it on this side, which, okay, so here's the proposal patient, here's the service. Um, putting it over here, uh, it equates to about a six hundred and fifty foot trench back, which just causes a project prohibitive, prohibitive set of problems, um, one of them being the electrical component of, um, transmitting, you know, voltage that distance on top of these inverters. Um, still a fairly small system, and if this is a big community solar array or a big megawatt system, then, you know, a project like that could maybe absorb that type of a distance, this one cannot. Um, but then, you know, the other issue of concern that's been brought up is, you know, the, the land. Uh, that would be a brutally disruptive trench, um, a cost prohibitive measure to make it work in the first place if it wasn't done. So that's just not a viable option, so... Here's our, the houses are back here, um, during the site visit, you know, those who can, that see, um, you know, the ends back here, it's wooded, we got wetlands up here, we can do, um, so this really is, um, this is not, there's been a concern of, like, this is placed to obscure view from the owners of the property, that's simply not true. Um, or that this was placed here to, uh, for cost saving measures, also not true. And this is literally the viable slot of property.
Jim?
Um, I don't have anything new other than, um, you were requested to be, must I mistake the date by the, uh...
That's happening on Friday.
Oh, okay. So I just wanted to know what update of, kind of, where that's standing.
Yeah, work, work is happening Friday, so it's being contracted and we're on the...
So, um, a mine site visit was conducted. It included members of the planning board, uh, members of the solar group appeal, um, and some representatives from the C A B. And so I don't want to put any more numbers now, uh, because it was not just one or two people designated to go. So I'll open it up for comments and questions and, uh, observations that remain as part of the site visit.
Can we perhaps bring up that, the recent rendering, that would refer to your question?
Um, I was gonna ask Jim, is this the most recent one where you were projecting where the evergreen trees?
Yep, that's the one that evergreen, yeah. And by the way, those will be installed at, um, somewhat mature, so to 12 feet at installation. Those who are there remember a balloon's up on state. And that the array that used to be in this rendering, which is the black willows, is still there, we didn't remove that, so, um, good luck finding it.
Alright, uh, who would like to start? Sharon?
The site is, we started the corner, which initially was like, oh my gosh, but when you actually look at the land, uh, you can see that the willows there, visibility, uh, was very minimal. If you look up on the driveway, it's all peeled up. I thought that might be an option, but if you're in the wetland area, get that, so it was a good option. But once you go beyond there, once the house, it's all trees. There's no open space, so it's all trees. So, uh, my feeling was that this is the best spot for it.
Others who were part of the site visit?
Comments? I agree with Sharon and also visited the Southlands site and looked at the, you know, from a distance, from various perspectives on Southlands. And I don't think that you will see it. I don't think you see it now with the willows, but with the addition of evergreens, uh, you definitely won't see it.
Anyone else?
I didn't go on the site visit, but I will go back to what you had said earlier about the definition of screening. And that it's, the intent is not to just completely obscure, but to break up the visual appearance of the installation, which, I mean, this actually goes farther than that and obscures it. And as far as, you know, what's most prominent about the electrical system is, you know?
Yeah, you can see it here, yeah.
You see, you could really pick out the, the poles and probably a solution, if it were to be moved to any other location, would require putting in more poles.
That would all have to come from this line.
Right, and so you're, this would be inviting more distraction to put it in other locations, so.
This really has, you know, put in a lot of thoughtful effort into, um, you know, figuring out new solutions every year. And, um, we've done that, we've, you know, used a racking system and dropped the elevation. We did the, I mean, it'd be a lot easier, you know, from, let's just say, that second pole. You can see, if we could just tap into that hole, the trench would be around 20 feet as opposed to 240 or 250. Um, but we're, you know, staying on that side, doing that longer trench to, to hit a pole that requires no, um, excavation on that side.
I would add that, um, one of the questions that has come up is, um, could it be located closer to the house? Or perhaps we can move around the house? And, uh, I will say that a site visit, uh, those who are on the site visit were reported the opportunity to go down to the house, which of course is not visible from this location. And the reports were that, um, it was densely wooded around the house and not amenable to the solar installation at that point. And given the historic nature of the building itself, the residents, roof mounted, would not be an appropriate installation. So just to put that out there in terms of, is there a viable solution down by the house? The answer to those who are on the site visit is that they did not think that that was viable. So if there's nothing more from the planning board, I will open it up to the public, for those who wish to make comment on the application.
I'm Michael Lanto, I live at 220 Fly Road, and, um, I'm one of the board directors at Southlands Foundation. And, um, I've been riding in Southlands since the early 1970s, since I was a kid. The natural duty of Southlands is something that is a very high priority to everyone that goes there. I am not opposed to solar energy. I put a 7.4 KW solar system at my farm 18 years ago. And I just wanna say off script, um, I put my array in a backfield so my neighbors would not have to look at it. Um, it required a lot more ditching, a lot more ditching, probably about 180 yards. And the wires had to be made bigger, I think, so the energy would not be lost. But, you know, I thought that it was worth doing that. Um, the Southlands view shed is one of the most valuable assets. Although our neighbors are doing their best to mitigate our view of the solar panels, I am still worried about their visual impact. When we were there for the site visit, um, there were three balloons that were flying that day. I can tell you from seeing my solar array, um, the balloons are not really a fair representation of what the array would look like, but I appreciate the effort that went into it.
Can I just make one comment on that? Just sort of basically, the balloons were set at each, the four corners of the highest point of the array. So those balloon clusters represented the highest point, which is right.
Uh, this is currently the proposal, the other question?
Uh, yes, currently it is at a public hearing. It has been continued at a public hearing, um, because, uh, you will be, planning board will be doing seeker, so we're waiting for seeker to be done before the Z B A can issue a final determination. Um, the board has started their preliminary discussions, it'd be likely to just mention that more quickly. Um, you know, the board, as Melody had mentioned, had been on the site visit with some of the planning board members. They too felt that the site visit kind of provided a lot of information and kind of alleviated some of their major concerns, um, you know, such as some location in the corner. Um, so I would say majority of the Z B A has expressed, uh, approval, likely to be coming for the, uh, request of areas. There was one board member that still feels there could be an alternative location, but I believe the majority is leaning towards granting. Um, again, it is currently still open for public hearing at the Z B A and, uh, we're waiting for the seeker presentation.
And we are, of course, waiting, um, to get the report on the archeology, can they give you a timeline?
So they said that they can issue a, uh, immediate finding report, so if the dig results in the immediate findings, um, you know, or they'll give us a report of their immediate findings after the dig, uh, kind of similar to you guys.
And they're scheduling for Friday?
Friday, yes.
No, I mean, you're still looking at a lead for so, certainly in the channel, we'll need kind of a report. So that would cause us to be continuing anything anyway, because that's the important outstanding report that we've got. Other than that, that's just, can mention seeker, um, are there any other items?
Yeah, the remaining items would be seeker and the consideration of, you know, touching on the project, uh, view. So it's really up to the board, um, you know, we're not gonna do approval tonight, obviously can't do that before the Z B A takes their action. But the Z B A is relying on the planning board to undertake the seeker because it was unlisted, so they go through the, uh, short form part two, like we've done for other solar panels. That can be done, you know, when you're ready, but the Z B A can't before, well, we'll be able to before until the planning board does that. So I don't know if you're ready tonight, you wanna see the 1A, 1B before we, you know, consider the seeker form and they go to have an impact. The next step would be seeker and then get that to the Z B A, Z B A goes through their process and then comes back to the planning board.
There is a, there was a question, among those questions, about impact on historical resources, correct? So would it be premature to answer that question without seeing the, the report? Would you agree that that's true?
I, I did have the correct assumption.
Yeah, so I think we will not go that, going through that point tonight because we still haven't the outstanding report to get the, we didn't have to answer that question. So, um, unless there's something else, are you looking to continue the public hearing?
Do you want to promote that?
Untorn. Uh, relying on the outside agents, the consulting firm to go report that to us in two weeks, when they already been doing it until Friday, seems optimistic?
The Z B A meets that Wednesday after that.
Pardon?
The Z B A meets that Wednesday after that, it won't tell you that, what is that?
After that. Uh, Z B A is number 17. And you're Well, we can schedule it and if you don't have the article, someone, someone who wanna make a recommendation to schedule it for two weeks out? If you don't have the report, then we're just gonna have to continue it for another two weeks.
Uh, yeah, I'll move that we continue to the 15th, I was thinking.
Okay, second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Poses such a motion, yes. So, put the pressure on your archeological firm to get the report, um, as then they'll see it in two weeks.
Okay, back here?
No, most
Well, I wasn't sure.
Got it.
I don't know, the beat, something like that.
Coffee shop.
Well, there have been times when we've met in other places, but
Yeah, back here.
I thought you guys only met once a month, which is why I'm asking, so.
Oh, no, we, well, we get you on the schedule, applicants, once a month, but in this case, we sometimes make an exception, so I guess. Thank you very much. Uh, mercifully, uh, the last, uh, public hearing, seeking is out of Rajat Dillas, LLC, New York State Energy and Little Road, site plan specialist, private department.
Good evening, Sean Kemp, on behalf of the, Kim Ryan Beck Dillas. Just a couple of things to bring the board up to speed. We had our site visit last Thursday, headed by Craig and Tom, thank you. Excuse me.
And others who tried to attend.
Yes, and who elected not to proceed. Craig Manning did receive comments back from C P L, um, about mid-August, I believe. Would, uh, Craig Manning, I'm sorry? They were a collection of comments from Christian.
Yes, you did provide one, I know that.
Yeah, it was shortly after, I think you might have given them the heads up that we were gonna be reaching out to them.
I know he submitted one, yeah.
Yeah. So that was a, a very big positive development to get the comments from C P L. And Craig Manning is now working on their response, uh, to the comments that were set forth by C P L. The idea is for Craig Manning to have, uh, their responses to the board on or before September 22nd. Um, so that, and we're hopeful that C P L is to get any additional comments back to us prior to the October meeting. See how that works out, but that's kind of, uh, what we have in mind as far as timing goes. The tree survey, we had some discussion about that at the site visit. We have that, we're in the, like, pipeline, so to speak, for the tree survey. There's a backlog with surveyors, so as soon as Craig Manning has a surveyor available to do that, we're gonna be, uh, conducting the tree survey. Uh, Craig had, uh, made a comment at the, uh, site visit regarding trees larger at three than 18 inches, as well as, uh, I think the code calls for inventory of those that are at six inches, but we're gonna ask that they also really need the 18 inch.
18 inches, hoping bigger than six inches.
Correct, the 18, and, uh, better bigger than that. And then, um, we were wondering if there's any additional comments in general from the board? Also, if the board had an opportunity to look at some of the signed proposals, I think that there's too many signed proposals. Um, so we didn't know if you had any feedback regarding that. And then, um, if there aren't too many comments regarding the project, Rob is intending to go forward with developing, uh, the renderings for the drawings, finalizing the drawings, developing the renderings and, uh, producing, I think he wanted, uh, 3D, uh, renderings.
Jim? Anything you're involved?
Um, just that we were, um, looking to find out the status of the outstanding, you know, outside agency reviews, which just provided on, um, the only other one, I can tarping on it, I'm trying to think of reasons, and it's a big thing for me as a sidewalk connection to the forebears. Any additional discussion on that?
No, I'm sorry, Jim, but every time I stop by, I, uh,
I'll be asking, just to keep it in the forefront, you know, like I said, I know you can't work on the property, love the commission, but it'd be great to have that there.
Sure, no, and, uh, in that vein, actually, one thing I did leave off is that, um, this week I'm gonna be reaching out to the neighbors to set up a meeting with them. So I think we can do that, but, um, based actually on the article, uh, that was in the Daily Catch, I believe that the forebears expressed, um, you know, support for the project. So hopefully, they're gonna be willing to meet with us and discuss that, I think it kind of fits, I mean, uh, all, all parties.
He's in favor of the sidewalk.
Yeah, so
But he's in Greece, so he's kinda hard to get.
Okay.
But he, he supports the project and he supports the sidewalk when, when the project is running.
So we'll, we'll follow up on that, Jim.
Yeah, because the details of that, we'd like to see that.
On the point, sure, certainly.
So that was one, the signage plan you talked about, I think we should briefly look at that tonight. I think there's a few that we're gonna have to discuss. Um, I think last time they talked about potentially moving the waste treatment plant? You didn't look into that, or am I mistaken on that?
Well, there was a, a comment from Mr. Capo regarding, he wanted to make sure that it was in the most efficient location. He brought up some points that he thought that maybe if it was moved, it might be better suited in a different area. Um, but our waste were, I think, will be looking into that.
That's correct, okay. The papers, that's it, because we talked about, and then, yeah, I think that was maybe one, talk about signage.
Um, so, uh, there was a portion of some stats in the site visit, um, some confusion about where the heat up site was. And, um, so I'm gonna ask for the folks that did make it and to not give the site visit to give their report. And then we'll follow that, we'll be discussing since this is continuing, as to whether or not, um, it could be advisable for a while to schedule a second site visit for the folks who weren't able, you know, retrospect, I, I think I wasn't paying enough attention when it was five eight, five o'clock before the holiday weekend. So I think there was a lot of things inspiring the different people that were able to make it. So we'll follow up, we'll record it for the discussion of, uh, we've got time, so, um, it may be feasible. I understand it was well laid out and people were, you know, very pleased, those who attended with what they could see and how user friendly you made it. So we can shake the waste, did I just?
No, a significant amount of time and effort and money went into making the, the site visit as accessible as possible.
And it was successful, so I just wanna share that just with everybody.
Appreciate that.
So, uh, I think Craig and, um,
Well, I, I think the first mistake, and maybe it was on my part, I, you know, we gathered here at the corner of Middle Road and 9G, which, you know,
I think that's on me, my miscommunication.
Yeah, and, uh, and I did have a chance to, you know, walk this part of the site, which doesn't really have anything, um,
Oh, I was searching.
Yeah, and, and, uh, that's when Sean saw us and, uh, we were all able to walk along the roadway. And that at least confirms the fact that walking along 9G
It's not safe.
It's not safe and it's, it's not fun. I mean, we were able to stay down in the weeds and, you know, away from traffic, but it's, it's definitely unpleasant. And have, you know, that makes it all the more important to have those walking connections. Another thing, I rode my bike in and I came this way, and it's really remarkable how placid and quiet and just, it's, it's such a wonderful feeling that you get on this part of the site. And that, that's kind of the, the look and feel of what we were able to observe once we got into the site. It's actually, there's this quietude that takes place when we get beyond, uh, that barrier. So maintaining So maintaining that kind of screening and that kind of barrier between this heavily traffic road and this serenity is a really important feature of this. I think, you know, for the people who are here and, you know, anybody else in the surrounding area. I was taken by the fact that the area is pretty open, there are a lot of trees, but they're mostly very small in size. There isn't really, it's not really defined by large mature trees like some other sites that we have looked at. So the amount of clearing is gonna be somewhat modest, they are gonna have to take down some, you know, pretty substantial trees, but I would encourage them to make the most of that and maybe reclaim the timber, you know, integrate that into the site somehow. Around about here, there's a feature in the landscape where it looks almost like it's a, it was used as a rock quarry, probably as a source for a lot of the stone walls that we see around here. This was the Hoddington property, based on some of the research that I've done, on both sides of Middle Road. Of course, this 9G didn't exist until thirties or forties, it was just one open contiguous field. So there is a stone wall on the site, the kind of traverse of the site right around, right around here, and there was some talk about, you know, doing something with that. And has, the roadway has to go through there, but the rest of the wall is gonna be preserved or kept in place, not pulled down, I guess. It's a pretty uneven site, there are a lot of changes in elevation, and they said that they were going to try to, you know, integrate that into the site, something that's not really evident from looking at the plans or even at the, at the model, that where there are some changes in elevation, but the site is gonna kind of follow a topography to some extent. Of course, there's significant amount of clearing and filling that's still gonna be taking place, but the net effect is pretty much nil, right? It's gonna be just borrowed from one...
Looking to balance our cutting and filling.
Right, so things that, it's cut out of one place and be used for filling other places. It seemed to be a pretty intelligible layout for the site. One thing I will mention is this road seems to cut right through a big embankment, and I'm wondering if there might be a better way to kind of follow the contours. It would prevent this road from being such a straight cut, but if there's some thought being given to relocating the sewage treatment, maybe it could be put in a place where the roadway wouldn't have to, you know, punch through the hillside or require a lot of cutting and filling. That's all.
Well, I really appreciate the work you did and laying this out, laying out the buildings, parking the buildings out, because it was almost a tactile field, it was a visual. You just feel where the buildings were, where the entrances to the buildings, and it's well thought out, like, there's the natural slope from this side down where you have the retention, and you have that end building floor, first floors actually, so it will keep any site from Midland and the road back, it'll keep that height down. I see it as well laid out, well thought out, you have the overflow parking, which will be used for the snow removal. So I can't comment on the road going towards the, uh, well and the wastewater treatment plant because we didn't go there. We walked by, we said, okay, it's off that way. From what I saw, the site's well laid out, and you're not, I don't see where you're gonna see it from the road, and even the homes behind it, it's clearly hidden pretty good from that side. You had me when you laid it out, the road was laid out in conjunction with the site.
Okay, um, I'll be next to ask if there's anything from the public.
Christopher Capo? I appreciate the ongoing discussion about the location of the sewage treatment plant. As you know, I brought that up at the last meeting. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, and I'll keep my time to a limit here because I don't wanna, you know, waste your time with stuff we talked about earlier. Is the public period gonna continue after this meeting? Will there be another meeting?
I don't see as close as the public hearing.
Okay, all right. Because some of my neighbors, the last couple of these meetings happened like right after a holiday weekend, and they don't know when, so...
I would also remind them that they can certainly send in others if they're not able to publicly accept comments.
Okay, and to that point, I have some points regarding the location of the sewage treatment plant and some of the, you know, the potential risks that could be mitigated by thinking about another spot, to put it, and I've...
This is those same, I mean...
It's a different...
Different comments from last?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I wanted to make sure I summarized and edited them for you guys. I have hard copy, or if you prefer, I can email PDF to Gretchen, whichever...
Then you summarize your comments and then forward your written comments to Gretchen.
Sure. Do you want me to summarize them now?
Sure.
Okay. There's, there are eight areas of risk related to the sewage treatment plant's location. The first is the visual impact with the scenic roadway, all right? We know, we know what that border is and we know that we can see that, you know, especially in the winter, to the point of that heavy vegetation, I kinda, and I wish you guys could come out there in the dead of winter, because there's literally no vegetation during the winter, it's all bare trees. Back when Dave Hughes was doing his building, which is north of my property, at that site visit, it was commented, there's no way you're gonna see this building from the residences, and that turns out to not be true, okay? I can see Dave's building in the winter. It doesn't bother me that much, but the point being that, you know, it's a different, completely different story during winter time. The second thing is the wetlands disturbance of having that access road from the main building nexus out to the sewage treatment plant. We're traversing, you know, wetland areas and wetland buffers, not to mention taking out a lot more trees than we might do to, right? I would assert that if a plant were moved, you don't even need that long roadway all the way to the well, you could have an access route from the well elsewhere on the property. And I would imagine the well is not a feature that needs to be visited all that often either, but, you know, that's a, that's a huge mitigation to eliminate that roadway through the wetlands and avoid taking all of those trees out for the purpose of that road, okay? The next one, the generator that goes along with the sewage treatment plant in the wetlands area, again, I mentioned this last time, if there are any issues related to fuel leakage or spilling, now we've contaminated wetlands, along with potential noise pollution of a generator running a test cycle periodically behind residences, okay? The discharge path risk, point number four, the intermittent stream where this plant is slated to be discharged right now is right down near the roadway there, right? Behind the Four Brothers, yeah, right behind Four, right there.
Right there.
Right? And then we know that that intermittent stream, you know, bilaterally traverses the rest of the property. If you could move it, you avoid that potential, you know, contamination of end leakage or pollutants or whatever could come out of that plant if it malfunctions, all right? So getting that discharged much closer to the egress point of the property seems to make sense. If there were a fire at the plant or an electrical issue or something that did require emergency vehicles up there, and they were used chemicals to put out any such fire, now we have introduced firefighting chemicals into a wetlands area, all right? And New York State actually recognizes that as a, as a potential liability for systems like this. The pumping system, to get all that effluent from the hotel site up to the sewage treatment plant, you've got a fairly complicated system consisting of storage tanks, subgrade, and then the pumping and electrical requirements to get all of that effluent up to the sewage treatment plant. It seems that that complexity could be reduced by having the thing closer to the buildings. And then finally, the impact on the neighboring properties with having that feature, you know, kind of behind them. So again, I've noted all of this, I've tied each of these points to existing town code and SECCR code, and I'm happy to give you guys a hard copy or email it, whichever you want. There you go. All right, thank you.
Any more? All right, planning board members, going forward.
I have a comment from my visit that was not included. Walking along the road or along 9G is terrifying and very loud, and it refers to me that the further away from the road that a sidewalk could be, the better off, and also it would be very helpful to have some landings between the sidewalk and the road. I think people would just feel safer walking that walk. The other thought I have is, I think we saw a brief picture of the wastewater plant, and it was, as I remember, very unattractive, and so I'm wondering about the possibility of a surround, no matter where it is, finally located, and landscaping, and I'm concerned about the view, certainly from 9G, but also from neighbors.
Others? So let me engage, Craig?
I just, I had asked about the Harton Archaeology Report, and I was able to find it in your, in your data filing at the, at the very end of the page document. And it seems like, they do mention a quarry, but they're talking about a church quarry, so a pre-contact church quarry, which would not be the site over here if you were looking at, more like a place where you're...
Where you're placing rocks.
Yeah, and that area seemed, it's identified as a site, I was a little confused because they said it's not of any historical significance. They still identify it as a, as a pre-contact site, and they did, within this area of potential effects, they did find some, I think they found one artifact, but it was not a, it was not diagnostic. So I'm just, I'm wondering, does this have any bearing on that location, which I thought was more focused toward the northern end of the site?
That's a very good point that you raised, and I do not have an answer as I sit here.
I do.
It was cleared by Shiloh and Chris, we got a clearance from the car site call.
No, I don't know if that was the question.
Yeah, well, it's, the clearance was, the APD is, we have no interest in that.
Yeah.
But the, uh, the way things are laid out on the site, how does that have a bearing on that one identified site that's on the property?
Is that all?
Is that all?
Yeah, and I'll have to, I understand the question, I think, and then I am going to...
And I'm just, I'm wondering if there's any implication with moving the sewage treatment plant to a different location, does that change the area of potential effects?
The quarry site is very close to that, is that what you're saying? It's close to it, so you want to see it to the...
Well, he's talking about two quarry sites, he's talking about the...
Yeah, there's one that, that's just like a, like a place where somebody brought a lot of, took a lot of rocks out of the ground.
That's up the church area.
Like a little gallery. And then somewhere in here, and they tend to be a little vague about that, so people don't go try to read the site for artifacts, there is an identified site somewhere in the northern end of the property, I'm wondering a lot what impact that might have on any potential changes to the location of either the well or the sewage treatment.
All right.
All right, can you keep talking about the wastewater? Why was it placed here?
I think that's what I'm gonna be getting an answer for.
No, why, they're existing here.
No, no, our wastewater treatment engineer is not here.
Okay, yeah.
I can address it a little bit, Tom.
Well, why don't we, I'd rather get a comprehensive, I mean, there's been a lot of questions raised on all of that.
Yeah, I think, I think Tom's question is a general question that's basically been raised by Mr. Capo and by the board previously. Craig, your question's a little bit more drill, drilling down a little bit to see, well, with, you know, and with any movement effect, the findings, what we're interested by the findings. But I think it's best for me to get that answer from the problem that's actually going through that process.
The one thing that I can clarify for the board just briefly is, there's a treatment plant, this is not wetlands area, there's the wetlands area, this is the buffer, so this was specifically located in an area that is not wetlands and not buffer. The discharge area is, and by the way, folks, you see this, this pathway, this service road goes through buffer area, and it's the smallest area where there's a crossing of the wetlands, that's why it was deliberately equipped there. It's the lightest touch that we could do as far as wetlands disturb, and it's a logical place for discharge right there, because this is a natural flow, which ends up eventually at Brentwood Hill, somewhere it is? It's a natural drainage path, so that's why the design was done that way. The well is also outside, this is not wetland area, this is buffer area, and it's outside that, so that's why those are located.
Okay, that was very helpful, thank you.
Okay, so you have, you have specific set of questions that Tom and Mr. Capo, that we can refer them to your wetlands, to engineers?
Yes.
Okay, I'm satisfied, we'll move forward with that. So, will we continue it, please, the public hearing? The question is, those of you who were not able to attend, is there desire on your part to visit the site? The place, Sean? Yeah? Edna?
When is scheduled, I'll come.
Okay, then I would like to proceed with identifying a date that is near the future as we plan, because I know you can lock time and effort into preparing.
I appreciate that.
And I don't want to allow this to get overgrown, so we'll ask Jim to be in touch and set another date, which will extend that to everybody, and also at the same time, because you just had George come to see any of that, so we'll extend the invitation to the other boards, and we'll do our best to investigate this and get out there and cover the, we're gonna be on staff opportunities. So thank you for the courtesy of that, and if there's nothing else and there's no public hearings, we'll... I think we'll let the sign go tonight.
Okay.
Give a planning board, uh, an opportunity to open the sign, we should take that.
Sure, you are gonna need a full signage plan. We know how many signs and where they're gonna go, and there's some history there related to some, something happened with Ruby's, you guys may need to varieants, so we'll have to talk about that. If you do, you may want to submit the signage package separately from the rest.
I think we talked about that the last time.
Well, Jim, I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend the board last month, but two meetings ago, you could look at the three different signed proposals that we had submitted. You had made a comment that you liked one in particular. You had made a comment that you liked one in particular. You identified which one that you liked. I'd have to go back, that was just for the monuments sign out of the road.
Yeah.
We have to look at the whole signage package to see if you're over on the sign size, which almost certainly you are, and there's now, we had something going on with Ruby's sewers on the road, and you can take a look at that, see if you can refer what you want, but the whole signage package has to be looked at to see where you stand in terms of the overall sign area. Yeah, that is all the interior signs, like, the word office on the building type thing, so...
Absolutely.
Right.
And directional signs for, like, motor vehicle type stuff?
Yeah, all that's going to count, so, I just want to make aware, yeah, that's going to be something else to look at, probably require variance to the board. We need to see a plan, whole plan to go exactly to that.
And we did indicate you have the option of separating the sign, we could form the sign approvals separate from the action.
Okay.
Because we did that, we did that.
Yeah, it's fine, as long as it's secure, that's what we're doing, that gap's... Okay.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to continue the public hearing, June 6th? October 6th? May I have that motion? Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Close, extension motion, please, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your continuing efforts to give the full information on this.
Have a good night.
Thank you. And our path to the next meeting, we would have been discussing the status of our warrants, LLC, and as I noted at the beginning, due to a lack of response from DOT at this point, the applicant has asked for this to continue until the October 6th. May I have a motion? Second, all those in favor? I oppose, extension motion, please. Jim, we now have five secondary bills, which Jim will just...
So, first one up is Christopher Travers. We just talked about this private drillers, I don't want you to bring the site up, you can do what you don't. We're proposing to install the ground mounted solar panels, in a proportion of property of 500 root 308, a location that's in front of the principal structure, they're by requiring a variance. We did review that earlier tonight, so if you tell us you don't know, so I'll interview you right now on my memo. Since the time board review's only begun and the public hearing hasn't been held, I don't know what you're going to want to do, but if you do want to move forward with a comment to the Z B A, I've provided two options, I'm not sure where we fall on this, one stating that your requested project raises no significant planning or environmental concerns, and the other option does raise concerns annually to the board.
I'm just, you know, before we've had a public hearing, before we've had a site visit, it just doesn't seem that it's appropriate to be commented on this, and I don't have enough information back to, sorry, I think...
Hold the public hearing.
Hold it until the public hearing.
Okay.
How the site visit been conducted? Scheduled the site visit?
Right. There are variances for the structure in front of the rental residence, and also is there an area variance or like an offset from the street, or it's just that?
It's just the distance, it's within the front yard setback.
Right.
Because I think the front yard setback, it's not even, it's not even necessarily that it's in front of the house, it's just that it's within the front, it's within the front yard setback. I think that's the standard for the ground mounted solar, so it's 100 feet, and they're requesting, I think it's 80 so 20 foot.
And just so that's...
Not because it's in front of the house? I'll go look, check, I thought I had my notes with me, is it? Let me see if I can find it, but, but just so that you know, the Z B A, they'll be opening the public hearing on September, what is it, 8th? So anyway, so there's another before any resolutions, if you want.
Okay, good. Let me see. So, Jim, you have the basic...
Yeah, I'll just turn to comments, stating that we wish to hold off on commenting on the public hearing, it's like we just... So with that, maybe I'll just skip over what you need for the moment, give two others that are similar. Winfield Court, we reviewed this one at our last meeting, I believe, this was the proposal down on Winfield Road to install a carport deck if you want around the house, this is almost, they had the pipe that used to hold alcohol, bring out alcohol at the fence court. They need pretty much variances to do the whole thing, the, it has a postage stamp of a building lot, a building area, when you put the setbacks in on the existing house. So again, this one, we haven't held a public hearing on, so I thought maybe we want to hold off on the public hearing on that one as well. 34 Mill Road, LLC, this one, we did get this, it's a pre-con, has not come before yet officially, but I guess they'll be submitted, so it will be on a future agenda. This one, the applicant's proposing to put an addition on an existing historic home, change the alignment of the driveway, put on a bunch of additions, carport, pool, decks, things like that. Again, we haven't even had this one preliminarily, it was just a public hearing, so I thought you might want to hold off on some of that as well.
I think what we can share is in the pre-con, there are significant additions proposed to this, that this is for a property that we want to associate with the address here, and will have significant implications, so I personally think we really have to have that coming for us before we land on that mediation.
That's those three.
When will, this one be on or then?
I think they're on in two weeks.
Okay, I'm just curious, it's like, again, just as with Travers, or Travers, we're still at public hearing, I just wanted to just know if it'll be October or beyond.
Backing up a little bit, William Meek, this one we did review last time as well, this was the proposal for the installation of a shed, the propane tanking generator between 99 and the road. He needs a variance from the Z B A because the location is not in the 150 foot front yard setback. Again, on this one, we haven't held a public hearing, we did review this.
You have a site visit? The site, a site visit? But you've been assigned?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, we don't have then the report from the public or the report from the site visitor.
And they also, applications, up to New York State D E C for just determination, see if there's any environmental impacts of D E C. So, then the fifth one, this is Andrea Nobic, we did review this one as well recently, this is the proposal on Hacker Road to subdivide the lot into three, one lot into three lots, one existing house into two home lots. In reviewing the property, the zoning administrator found that their subway is the element, it did not meet the zoning code requirements, this has been interviewed two weeks ago for a subdivision, but the variance is requested from the Z B A, including accessory structures being in front of the principal dwelling, there are eight of them, that are in front of the principal dwelling. The aggregate accessory structure floor area is 1,500 square feet, there's a total of 4,883 square feet, and there are more than three roofed structures, or nine on the property. Again, haven't had the public hearing on this one, but we did review it, so we'll see if that has history, we'll hold off on this. Thank you for that.
All right, as I don't see anything else on my agenda for this evening, I would like to go to motion for adjournment. So, will we, motion is second, all those in favor? Close, extension motion, please.